I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Moore County Board of Education, Monday, February tenth, 5:00 PM. Is there a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I make a motion the board will enter into closed session to prevent the disclosure of confidential personnel information pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A1, A5 and A6 and General Statute 115C-319 and to consult with the board attorney and preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A3 including a discussion of State versus Tapia Ramirez, Moore County Superior Court numbers 19CRS 458 and 19CRS 50659.
All motions are moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries six oh. We will go into closed session and return at 6:30.
At this time, I'd like to call back to order this business meeting of the Moore County Board of Education. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Thompson, second by Ms. Caldwell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six oh. Alright, so we will now move to pledge. Dr. Brown. Welcome Ms. Cooper from Southern Middle School.
Yes, and I'm very excited to have two of our eighth grade students with us tonight.
Hello, my name is Javion Sonner from Southern Middle School and I'm in the eighth grade. Can you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My name is Ada Williams and I'm an eighth grade student from Southern Middle School. Today, I'd like to talk about perseverance. Perseverance means persistence in doing something despite difficulty or delay in achieving success. To me, this means sticking with something even though there are many obstacles in your way, and always believing in yourself. Over the years, I've persevered through the ups and downs of life. There are several quotes that I've been able to relate to and I'd like to share a few of them with you. "Work hard now, don't wait, and if you work hard enough, you'll get what you deserve," Shaquille O'Neal. "Everything negative, pressure, challenges, is all an opportunity for me to rise," Kobe Bryant. "Sports are such a great teacher. I think of everything they've taught me: camaraderie, humility, and how to resolve differences," Kobe Bryant. "One thing you gotta know about me is I have absolutely no filter. I have no problem saying what I think of someone," Kobe Bryant. "Self-love has very little to do with how you feel about your outer self. It's about accepting all of yourself," Tyra Banks. All of these quotes show that as long as you believe in yourself and persevere through the tough times, you will always be successful. I persevered through the tough times from a young age. While my journey is not over, I am still committed to becoming successful and ready to persevere through all the tough times to come. Thank you.
Would the parents please stand? Would you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Would Melody Thomas please join Chair Carter and Vice Chair Thompson at the front? Melody Thomas from West Pine Middle is this month's Engage Inspire Succeed Certified Staff Honoree. Ms. Thomas is the Media Specialist at West Pine Middle School. However, Media Specialist is only one of her duties. Ms. Thomas serves as the school's English Language Arts Professional Learning Community Facilitator with a mouthful. And she is a member of the school's Instructional Leadership Team and the school's Webmaster. She is the Battle of the Books Coach and serves on the multi-tiered system of support team. Ms. Thomas is a servant leader in every sense of the word and is a consistent advocate for the needs of teachers and students. Her consistent support of students and staff at the school is a constant that is reassuring to the West Pine Middle community. Congratulations, Ms. Thomas. Would Principal Massengill and members of the Thomas family please stand and be recognized? Would Mary Beth Thomas please join Chair Carter and Vice Chair Thompson at the front? Mary Beth Thomas from Union Pines is this month's Engage Inspire Succeed Support Staff Honoree. Ms. Thomas exemplifies each of the elements of the Engage Inspire Succeed recognition. She engages students as a Leo Club Advisor, which partners with the community organizations to assist with volunteer service projects and fundraisers. Ms. Thomas inspires students to fulfill their potential as leaders through student to student, a club that promotes a seamless, successful, and memorable transition for new students. She works diligently to train student leaders to function as a team that plans, implements, reflects on how their own leadership skills can be used to help others. Ms. Thomas challenges students to participate, engage, and experience new things that pull them toward college and career readiness. Union Pines High School is proud and grateful for all Ms. Thomas's contributions. Congratulations, Ms. Thomas. Would Principal McCormick and members of the Thomas family please stand and be recognized? Thank you. You're always there. Penny Haywood, would you please join Chair Carter and Vice Chair Thompson at the front? Penny Haywood from West End Elementary is this month's Engage Inspire Succeed Volunteer Honoree. Ms. Haywood has been an active part of the West End Elementary PTA for the last three years. She has two students at West End Elementary, Annabelle and Ivy. Last year, Ms. Haywood volunteered to be a part of the Moore County Schools Redistricting Committee and this year, she is the West End Elementary PTA President. She has organized a successful Fall Festival, a book fair, the Keep West End Elementary Germ-Free Supply Drive, as well as an upcoming Winter Dance. She is a special person with a kind and generous heart and she uses her big personality to cut to the chase and do what needs to be done to support the students and staff at West End. Congratulations, Ms. Haywood. Principal Kunsicki, please, and the members of the Haywood family, please stand and be recognized. That must be Annabelle and Ivy. Nathaniel Horton, please join Chair Carter and Vice Chair Thompson at the front. Nathaniel Horton, an eighth grade student at the Community Learning Center at Pinckney, is this month's Engage Inspire Succeed Student Honoree. Nathaniel is a student who is actively engaged in his learning. He inspires others and succeeds in reaching his goal. He maintains all As and exceptional attendance. He is humble and respectful to everyone. Nathaniel has excelled so much in his academics that he's been able to take a high school elective online. His peers recognize him as a standout and often refer to him as the genius in their class. He has quiet kindness and shows grace to his peers who are facing unique challenges. Nathaniel's current interests include gaming, creating a YouTube series, and all things computers. He has his eyes set on moving to Pinecrest High School next year as freshman to continue his academic success. His goal is to attend New York University and become an anesthesiologist. For so many reasons, Community Learning Center at Pinckney is proud of Nathaniel as he represents the school as an example of a young man who engages, inspires, and succeeds. Congratulations, Nathaniel. Would Principal Wilson and the Horton family please stand and be recognized? Would Sean Garza please join Chair Carter and Vice Chair Thompson at the front? Sean Garza, a senior at Union Pines High School, just returned from competing at the Navy Nationals Air Rifle Marksmanship Championship in Phoenix, Arizona. He has been a member of the Union Pines Navy JROTC for two years and holds the rank of Cadet/Ensign. Sean led his team to a third-place finish out of 64 programs in the North and South Carolina Area Six Championships. Sean qualified for Nationals by shooting 1049 out of a possible 1,200 points, ranking him the number-one individual shooter in Area Six, which encompasses all of North and South Carolina. In addition to his expert shooting, Sean is the team commander of the Union Pines Cyber Patriot Team. Sean has been accepted at the Citadel and plans to major in criminology. Congratulations, Sean. Would Principal McCormick and the Garza family please stand and be recognized? Charlie Ritter, Jordan Brower, Carol Rice, please come forward. Leslie Catalan Avila, Ashana Ingram, Lana Marley, Kayden Beard, and Adriana Sexton, please join Chair Carter and Vice Chair Thompson at the front. And I think we ought to also include Ms. Robledo as the coach to come on forward. Ms. Robledo? You're not gonna come?
I think she had a little bit to do with it.
Yeah, just a little bit. Mr. Hayes, I'm sorry. Get the coaches in there. Elise Middle School's first LEGO League team is comprised of eighth graders Charlie Ritter, Jordan Brower, Carol Rouse, Leslie Catalan Avila, Ashana Ingram, and sixth graders Lana Marley, Kayden Beard, and Adriana Sexton. Together, these students were tasked with identifying a problem with a building or public space in their community and designing the solution. The team placed first in the Innovation Solution Project State Competition. Inspired by an Elise student who is visually impaired, the team created an app called EarSite. With this app, visually impaired students can scan a QR code using a braille trigger on a classroom door and a voice will tell them where they are, the subject of the classroom, and the teacher. An Elise student who is visually impaired found this app to be very helpful in navigating and sprawling school campus. Congratulations, young ladies. Would Principal Wiley and coaches Robledo and Hayes are there and the members of these students' families, please stand and be recognized? Thank you, Ms. Hayes, for all you've done. As in your...
Dr. Brown, just two things, real quick. Sean, y'all finished third in North Carolina/South Carolina? Okay, so how did you rank among North Carolina schools? Was there a North Carolina... Was there a North Carolina school ahead of you in the first two?
Second.
Second? So we had North Carolina, so we were second, essentially second in North Carolina, third in North Carolina/South Carolina. And then we'll look forward to hearing about how things worked out at Nationals. We don't have those results yet.
They'll come in next week.
And then, Dr. Brown, one other thing. I had the privilege of spending an afternoon with Ms. Robledo and the young ladies here about two months ago, and at that time, they were just laying out what they were doing and they were piloting it. They were running their beta testing on it. It was quite extraordinary. You can't capture, when they just come up and grin at you and get their picture, you can't capture the passion and the enthusiasm and the intellect. And this is a group of young ladies, been together since Robbins, and been sort of tracking them over the years. Rest assured, they're gonna change the world.
No doubt. As in years past, the board is excited to recognize those teachers that have gone above and beyond to achieve the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards certification. Teachers who achieve this recognition are regarded as among the best teachers in the nation. The certification process can take up to five years to complete. It includes a detail-oriented portfolio with artifacts, student samples, and analysis. The portfolio also includes film sessions of a teacher in action in the classroom. Additionally, certified teachers must pass a test that demonstrates their depth of content knowledge. This year, Moore County Schools has six teachers who have achieved initial certification. As I call your name, please join Chair Carter and Vice Chair Thompson at the front. Linda Barber, Shawna Fabotnick, Cynthia Lahon, Jessica McKittrick, Alicia Nazar? 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 And if those ladies would just stay there for a second. Once you earn National Board Certification, it's valid for five years. After that, you must undergo a renewal process. Renewal is a process by which teachers create and submit a profile of professional growth which demonstrates how the teacher's practices continue to align with the five core propositions of the National Board standards. This year, we have eight Moore County teachers who have achieved recertification. As I call your name, please join Chair Carter and Vice Chair Thompson at the front. Wendy Bean, Christiane Bebo, Tanya Calk, Tricia Kavaness, Rachel Curry, Teresa Little, Alana Pennington, and Rhonda Phipps. Congratulations to all of you, but a special thanks and recognition should be given to Ms. Sharice Jackson, who has served as the District National Board Coordinator. She has provided countless Saturday morning support sessions for both new candidates and renewal candidates. This support has been much appreciated and has resulted in a significant increase in the number of teachers who have qualified. Many thanks to Sharice and her dedication to the National Board Certification process. Congratulations to them all.
Hi, how are you?
Oh, excuse me, babe.
I'm good. It's good to see you. I do. Oh, my gosh. Contacts, it's like, okay, yeah, now you look great. Yes, nice to see you.
Doing good.
Yeah. I'm the one who flunked out. I'm still the one who flunked out.
No, you didn't. No, you didn't. How are you doing?
I'm doing good.
Yeah.
I know, right? Well, I'm glad that your son or daughter got this. Good. Oh, good. Well, you don't need to stick around because it gets super boring.
We have this brief pause while folks are departing.
All right, Dr. Grimace, at this time, we'll move on to the program highlight.
Yes, ma'am. At this time, I will invite, I think it's Dr. Bridget Johnson. Mr. Steve Johnson, a dear friend of Dr. Bridget Johnson.
One of my best friends. Yeah, it was a little loud out there. Sorry, it took us a moment to get in here. We weren't sure we were transitioning in just yet.
Yeah, we can, Steve, we can go ahead and close that door. Leave that door back there open, and we'll close that one. Jenny, leave that one open in the back, and we'll just close this one.
Now we're good.
There we go.
Thank you very much. All right, Board Chair Carter, Dr. Grimace, the Board of Education, it's my pleasure to give you an update and a highlight on our active collaborative engagement cohort, our grant that we've had now for two years. And I'm gonna turn it right over to Ms. Leann Holmes to lead the way through the presentation.
Just gonna tell you a little bit about the grant. The goal of this grant is to build on the knowledge and skills that our K-5 students are currently receiving and expand that into our secondary classrooms. The teachers that are involved with this grant, they develop standard-based lessons that target low-performing areas, and these lessons' projects will incorporate design thinking, digital learning, and the four Cs: communication, collaboration, creativity, and critical thinking. These teachers are given money to purchase materials. It could be digital materials, engineering materials, as they write the projects. And the goal of this grant is to take these lessons and expand them not only across Moore County, but throughout the state. And we're hoping, or not hoping, we are, gonna use a platform of GoUp and NC to publish these lessons up to that platform so that they can be shared out across the state. We have two cohorts of teachers. Our first cohort of teachers was last year. We had 25 teachers. They went through a year of professional development. They wrote their lessons. We have 45 standard-based project lessons out of that first cohort of teachers, which I think is awesome. They are, this year, they are currently implementing those projects in the classroom, and then we're gonna take those and publish them up to GoUp and NC. We have a second cohort of teachers, and we have 24 teachers in that cohort. They are currently receiving professional development. Then they're gonna take, then they are given an amount of money where they can purchase materials, engineering materials, digital tools, to write their projects. They'll be writing their projects in June of this year, and then they will implement those projects next year. We also have a teacher, Ms. Dalmore from Pinecrest High School. She has the opportunity, she got accepted to present her project from Earth Science at NC Tyus this year. So I think that's pretty exciting. I am now going to turn this over to a teacher that was in our first cohort. This is Ms. Durantz. She's an LA teacher from Pinecrest, from Union Pines High School. Oh, no. I was messed up. From Union Pines High School, and I have actually had the privilege of being in her classroom and seeing some of the projects that she's done from the A's, and they are awesome. So I'm gonna let her speak now.
Hello. Thank you for hosting us. My name is Mary Durantz. I teach English to over 180 high school students, none of whom, when polled, will admit that they want to study English in college or have anything to do with being an English major in college. That's where STEM training becomes absolutely transformative and critical for educators. I like STEM training, not because I'm going to be part of the generation that colonizes Mars, but our students will. So there is a built-in disconnect with that. Literacy no longer means what literacy meant to my generation. Not only do they need to understand Dickens, but they need to understand and evaluate deep fakes. Not only do they need to read Faulkner, but they need to be able to critically read Facebook posts. So one of the lessons that I was able to put together in my classroom, I like to launch in the first week of any semester, just to change the paradigm of what they expect to learn in English class in Room 106. So what they were challenged to do was address one of our standards that we traditionally do not test well on, and it's key to literacy. It's the ability to look at evidence and make, connect that with schema in your mind, background knowledge, and make a defensible inference based on that text evidence. So they are challenged to code Google logos that an objective observer can interact with, both in terms of its actions and its visual rhetoric, and the objective observer has to be able to make a logical inference based on the unified evidence in the Google logo. And it completely has rewritten that dynamic and the level of engagement in my classroom. Oh, and this is one example. Do I press go?
Tyler's still at it.
This is what's called a high-pressure environment for a chip.
Mr. Callahan knows no pressure.
Yes, no. I think he got his password right. It looked good there, buddy.
Hello, my name is Michael Guzzi, and this is my Google Google. It represents me because I like to play video games. The easiest part was coding the actual pieces, and the hardest part was having somebody tell me what blocks T is to code.
I'll turn it over to Ms. McKittrick and Mr. Fury to tell you more about what they're doing at their project at Northmore High School.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for having us. We began our project planning by looking at the curriculum and areas that our students in particular struggle with, and we found that one of the areas that we tested low end typically was equations of circles, and that's a big part of the Math III curriculum. So we decided to focus our efforts on the circles units over the course of several projects, and the one that we want to talk about this evening was one that spanned over three days. We began by using digital tools to write the equations of circles and just the properties thereof. And then day two, Ms. McKittrick took an idea that she had done in previous years, and we expanded on that.
So in one of the circle properties, we talk about circumcenter, which is creating a circle and finding the point that is equidistant from all the points on the circle. And the example I always give my students is, okay, if we close down all three elementary schools in our area, where would be the ideal elementary school? You know, something relatable that they can imagine. So in our picture, in our Google, you can see in our map, we showed where the three elementary schools were. We pretended we were gonna close all of them down, and we figured out where could we build that new elementary school. So they had to pull everything that they know from eighth grade all the way through Math III to create the circle, create lines, and figure out where would this actual elementary school be. And we had them predict where they would be, and it was not anywhere close to where it actually ended up being. And it was really neat because they knew on the map. Most of my kids were like, oh, yeah, I know exactly who lives in that house where it ended up. When we were talking about it today, one of the other teachers said, oh, yeah, the guy that lived there used to be a big pigeon, homing pigeon person. So it's something that they could picture and know and understand. They could see how it could be equidistant. Then we expanded it to the whole county. We said, all right, land in Pinehurst is really valuable. We wanna, they wanna get their taxes, so they're gonna move the hospital. So where could we move the hospital so it's fair for everybody in the county? And we made them look at census data, information about population and everything, and they figured out where would be a good location for the hospital for the whole county that would be fair for everybody.
So we had them do it first with paper and pencil methods, you know, going back to those basic engineering skills, and then move it into the digital age. We used map overlays in a free software called Desmos, and then they can write circle equations and get, you know, plan on their map over what radius from the hospital, what towns could I serve with different travel times, different radii from the hospital center. Thank you.
And so, as you can see, these projects have been really relevant and engaging. These are our cohort one, and you've just heard a couple examples. As part of your board materials, you have a sheet that has all 45 of the first cohort's projects, front and back. Sorry about the font, it is very tiny, but it's a lot of projects and a lot of good work happening in that first cohort. The second cohort is in the same process as the first cohort, so they're receiving professional development, and then they'll be writing their projects in the summer, in the third week of June. One piece that we did want to highlight is this participating in a site visit to High Falls Elementary. The first cohort went to Robbins Elementary to see the design and engineering work that we're doing there that we want to see in grades 6 through 12. So we're gonna do the same thing here this Thursday, is actually the day we're traveling out to High Falls, taking the second cohort out there to talk about what are they doing in those grade levels that can carry through and that we can capitalize on in grades 6 through 12. So this grant is all about engagement in the classroom. It's taking our engagement that we're seeing great strides in in K-5 and mapping it out 6-12 with some relevant projects. And I will say also that I'm really glad that they highlighted that they talked about these projects have to do with the content standards that their kids are having the most trouble with.
On tests.
On tests.
Right.
Exactly. On their achievement test, we looked and see with the help of the CNI Department, what are the standards our kids are having the most trouble with? That's where we're targeting these projects.
Awesome.
So to finalize and kind of close up, I just want to recognize all these teaching leaders. Like Leann said, we've got 25 in the first cohort and 24 in the second cohort. And at this time, to kind of close up our presentation, we'd like to invite them all forward to be formally recognized and grab a picture in front of the board.
Come on up.
Right from the front here?
No, just you and Pam. And not unless you want it, buddy.
I think everybody should come in. This is a big team effort.
Yeah, but there's way too many people. It's just you two.
As soon as possible, and they have to come in a little bit.
Hey, folks, don't go away just yet. Go ahead and have a seat for just a second. Steve, if you'll permit me, just say, I'm gonna ask you a question here.
A lot of mine ended up in Eastwood area.
Madam Chair and Madam Vice Chair, if we could, just for a second. Steve, I just want to connect this presentation to a previous presentation. This is one of two grants that we received. Could you articulate those two grants yet again? Just put this in context of something you've presented previously.
Absolutely. So last spring, we presented, and I believe Mr. Morris is here, he was with us to present on both grants, where we talked about the K-5 Focus Grant, which is a digital teaching and learning grant called our Innovation Academy, which has allowed us to bring folks in from all across the state to see our schools, to learn more about how they can spread this into their own classrooms in grades K-5. And the connection here with this A's cohort is to take the work that we're doing in K-5 and create teacher leadership to bring that engaged learning to grades 6 through 12. and create teacher leadership to bring that engaged learning to grades 6 through 12.
And the two grants were approximately what amounts?
The first grant is approximately $300,000, and then this grant, the ACE cohort, was approximately $150,000 over two years.
And how many school districts in North Carolina received both grants?
That would be zero.
Yeah, yeah. Be one, yeah.
One, right, right. I thought it said other.
And to be a school district that received one of these grants, you had to already have in place an interest on the part of teachers and a demonstrated capability of delivering. And so among these highly competitive grants, we were the only one that got both because we have teachers that meet that description, and we have professional development, curriculum specialists, and DIFs, and people that support that, that distinguished Moore County among all other school districts across North Carolina. Is that correct?
Correct. And the support staff, I'm glad you mentioned that. The DIFs have been integral in all of this work. Three of the DIFs that were here, the high school DIFs, have really been integral in the ACE cohort. But exactly, the CNI department, the DIF team working in collaboration was a big reason why we were awarded this grant.
Madam Chairman, any questions from board members?
We have, what, May 4th or somewhere in there, the big elementary robotics?
Second and third.
It's April?
April.
Oh, okay, it's moved on.
April, December, and third. Yes, ma'am. So we'll have our big, so that grant, the K-5 grant, in this year, last year, we had a one-day conference slash elementary robotics. This year, we've expanded to two days. So April the 2nd is going to be a full conference experience. We'll have over 200 educators come to the Pine Needles Lodge and receive PD, and our own teachers receive PD on engineering and design in the classroom. And then the second day is back at Pinecrest High School for the annual elementary robotics competition. So if anyone needs to get excited about it, that's the place to be on April 3rd.
And when is the, excuse me, Doc, when are the middle school and high school?
The middle school robotics is May the 1st. Make sure I check my date there. Friday, May the 1st this year will be middle school robotics, also at Pinecrest High. And the high school robotics, we had our scrimmage. Their season is over. We had our winter warriors in December, and they've just competed with their regional qualifiers.
Wow. Wonderful, thank you.
Dr. Brown, I think you're confusing it with Fun Fest.
Okay, no, Fun Fest is another thing with CT East.
That's correct. Well, we also have integrated STEM into that. That's correct. But Madam Chair.
I'll say, if you want to get a feel for energy, go to the elementary competition. There's enough energy to blow the roof off with the teams that are in there.
Yeah, that's open to the public. We'd love anyone to come and take a look, see what we're doing.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you.
And knowing that these were all teachers, and they're going to be back in class tomorrow, if any of you want to just head on out the back door, feel free to go right ahead. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Thompson, second by Dr. Brown. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the consent agenda carries, 6-0. Ms. Thompson, do we have public address to the board this evening?
No, Madam Chair, we do not.
Thank you very much. All right, this will move us to board action. Dr. Grimacy.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to draw your attention. Laura, if you could click on the link to the executive summary for item 4A, and then if you can, can you blow that up just a little bit?
The resolution?
Yeah, the resolution. I'd like to enlarge it. There you go. And if you could scroll down to the fifth, we're going to go the other way, yeah, the whereas that's got the corrections in it. Madam Chair, I'm directing the board's attention to the, to three simple changes in wording to two lines in the fifth whereas statement of this resolution that you approved on December, at the December 9th regular business meeting. At the request of the county commissioners, when Mr. Barath and I met, and you as well, met with them last week, where they took action to decline the school board's offer of acquisition of our surplus school properties, the commissioners requested that we make the adjustments to the wording in this fifth whereas statement so that it would read, "To sell each site that is part of the surplus property for its fair market value such that the proceeds of the sales will be," instead of "can be," "used as maintenance and capital outlay," as opposed to simply "capital outlay," "to cover some of the school system's many pressing maintenance and capital needs," as opposed to just capital needs prior to the sale of sites. These adjustments do not make any change to the content or substance of the resolution. My promise to them that I would request this change facilitated their action, and so I offer that this evening.
Are there any questions? Is there a motion to approve the changes requested?
So, so moved.
Moved by Mr. Dennison, second by Mr. Weaver. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, 6-0. Thank you. Dr. Grimacy, on to the superintendents.
Madam Chairman, just one brief statutorily required statement. Madam Chair, the only update that I have for the board this evening is to announce a settlement in the case of CB versus Moore County Schools, 19 EDC 06201, in the amount of $13,000. This is within the settlement authority previously approved by the board, and the purpose of this announcement is merely to satisfy that statutory reporting requirement. This completes my monthly report. Madam Chair, I remain at your service.
Thank you, Dr. Grimacy. All right, this moves us on to board comments. Ms. Caldwell, would you like to begin?
I don't have anything.
All right. Mr. Weaver?
I'm just impressed by the presentation that was made today. It's amazing to see what's going on in our schools.
Dr. Brown?
I applaud Mr. Weaver's comments because it's always good to see teachers recognized for their professional development with their National Board Certification, and our students that are moving forward, and our young people that are involved in so many various activities. And I'm just very proud of what we've been doing here and how we continue to move forward.
Mr. Dennison?
One quick, one quick comment on the Galaxy Girls. I also saw them in Raleigh last year when they were in the museum there, and they had Mark Johnson and Dan Force came by and said hi to them and had their picture taken with them.
All right. Ms. Thompson?
I don't have anything.
All right. Well, I'm about to head out on Friday with the Pinecrest Speech and Debate Team to go to Harvard. I anticipate a little snow and some really, really cold weather while we're up there. Just brings to mind that it's a pleasure to travel with them, or with any of our Moore County groups. We've improved several field trips tonight as well, and each one of those is a learning experience. So with that said, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move the meeting be adjourned.
Second.
All right. Motion by Mr. Dennison, second by Ms. Caldwell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.